Give him, give him the.
I have a hard enough. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Belvidere City Council Committee of the whole meeting of April 22nd, 2024. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini.
Here.
Brereton. Brereton is absent. Flurry.
Here.
Frank.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gramkowski.
Here.
McGee.
Here.
Mahal. Mahal's absent. Snow.
Here.
Stevens.
Here.
Eight present.
Okay, thank you. And do we have anybody registered, public comment?
We do not.
Okay, we'll move on then. Public forum, we have none. Next page, reports of officers, boards, and special committees. Item A, Pam Lopez Fettis from Girls' Dimensions is with us this evening. Welcome, Pam.
Thank you, Mayor. I left a report on your desk. Just wanted to highlight a few of our highlights, some projects that we're working on, just an update on Project Z, which we shared last month, which was a hardware store. We looked, they are considering one of the sites that they've been interested in. We've been sharing some ways that they can offset their costs, especially with electric, because the building that they're interested in needs a lot of modifications. This is the building that's owned by Boone County. So we're trying to look at ways in which we could enhance their, ways to offset their costs, because some of the costs sometimes to revamp a building is as much, especially an old building, is as much as to build a new one. So hopefully, we'll hear something good news about a purchase in that site. We also had a meeting with Team Belvidere and Project 66, which a group of investors were interested in Belvidere for the next location, for a fuel station, hotel, and/or a software company. So we looked at about seven sites in Belvidere, provided them with a package of details for each of those sites, and some of the logistical advantages of choosing Belvidere. This could possibly be a seven to ten million, over ten million dollar investment. And we also had submitted for a transload company, a few sites. They're looking for 10 to 15 acres for a company, and that would mean about 600 to 700 rail cars. And we're seeing a lot of these types of developments from businesses that are outside of the, maybe in the Chicagoland area that are looking for some rail, and they don't have access to rail, so they may be utilizing other sites as transload centers. So we qualified for a couple of different ones, and hopefully to hear from them, as well as an industrial company is looking at, I think it's the Antilon Building on Crystal Parkway. And we're also working with, the Yang Fein Building will be under auction, and we're getting developers or interested, prospects that are interested in responding to that proposal, and they're looking at some of the benefits coming here. So we've been sending a lot of information out. That auction will take place in May, so hopefully it'll go very quickly, and we'll hear about it. Just some of the other things is Illinois is going to be awarded the Civil Shovel Award from Area Development Magazine. They, the Illinois submitted five projects. Walmart was one of the projects, and they indicated that it directly contributed to Illinois receiving the award. So we should be, that should be recognized, and Walmart's success will be highlighted in the second quarter of this, and once it becomes available, we'll try to get some copies for you. And just in general, we had about 119 projects. About 53 are in the committed construction stage. We're starting to see a lot more of the enterprise-owned investments. A couple of highlights and activities, we are involved with the Industrial Day and Illinois EV Industry and Manufacturing Conference, and that's going to be this Thursday. And this will be an opportunity for us and businesses in our area to do some one-on-one, kind of like, I always say, speed dating with businesses. So we'll be involved in that and trying to showcase this area. And then there's a number of expos and conferences for businesses coming up at Rockford University and with the ACE program. And we also have our, we're getting ready for our networking event for our investors on May 22nd. And August 29th, we have our annual dinner tentatively scheduled, so I'm trying to get confirmation from the speaker.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Fettis? Alderwoman Freeman?
Hi, Pam.
Hi.
Thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you.
Project 66, I think you mentioned that you did, like, packages, packets, and toured several different sites. Who puts together those packages that attract them or let them know what they're looking for?
Growth Dimensions does. So sometimes a project comes to us, and then they request for, a request for information. And we have to gather all the information that goes on the spreadsheet, and we submit it to the business with supporting documentation. This can be anywhere from a one-page document to a 40-page document. This was a case that we had, we didn't get this request for information until after our visit, and we submitted a 40-page package this morning.
So they contact you, you put together these packages, and then the city comes in on the, on the backend?
Sometimes. This one was something that, when they contacted me, I had a meeting with them initially, and I said, would you like to come out here? And we did the site visits together. And it was, so it was a group kind of involvement. Sometimes we submit the information, we wait to hear from them, and they may do a little bit more due diligence, and then they want a site visit. So no project is alike. They all, we kind of work at what their speed is.
Okay. I was just wondering if the...
Yeah, the process tends to go, it's different for everyone. The ones that typically come through the state are usually, you're submitting all this information upfront, and then the site visit comes later on down the line. When we're contacted directly, or when we have a relationship with somebody, or meet somebody, we can kind of bring them into the community a little bit quicker.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay. And Mr. Anderson and I did take the afternoon off and, and go with Pam and the potential clients for the afternoon. I think we visited all the sites to get together.
Seven, seven sites.
And I hope that, I hope they're interested. I think they are, and I hope it pays off.
I do as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Public safety unfinished business, we have none. Item two, public safety, new business. Item A, police department update. Chief Woody, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you very much. Since my last update, the Fire and Police Commission appointed Tyler Stansford as a probationary police officer. He'll be sworn in on May 2nd at 10:00 a.m. here at City Hall. If you're available, your attendance would be welcome and appreciated. That'll leave us with one opening to fill. We currently have three officers on long-term leave, and two who are in the final step of field training before going to solo patrol. The department has accepted three more entry-level applications. We conducted three more entry-level interviews last week, and we have one more to do here in the near future. Needless to say, this new testing process has definitely made things much more flexible and convenient for not only the department but the applicant. We've seen an increase of applicants, you know, so we keep plugging along, trying to get these positions filled. Officer Schwartz was recognized by WIFR with the Remarkable Woman Award for her community service with the Behavioral Task Force. She was issued $1,000 that she donated to the Boone County Food Pantry. She was then flown out to LA where she competed nationally against all of the other Remarkable Women Award winners throughout the U.S. We found out today that Officers Danielak, Ellingson, Garcia, McDermott, Rackley, Reese, and Wyland were selected by the Illinois State Police to receive the Medal of Honor due to their display of exceptional bravery and heroism while responding to the EF1 tornado at the Apollo Theater on March 31st, 2023. These officers will be recognized by the Illinois State Police on May 20th, 2024 in Springfield. There were only four departments and 13 officers from Illinois who were selected to receive the Medal of Honor for 2023. That'd complete my update for this evening. I'll answer any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Woody? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned on May 2nd, you're having a police officer sworn in?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Did you have a time?
10:00 a.m.
I'm sorry, I missed that. Thank you.
That's okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Chief, I've noticed a lot more sheriffs patrolling in town than I ever have before. Is that by design, or are we short officers, and so we've incorporated some from the county to help us out?
I don't, I wouldn't say it's by design. I would say that they work very well together. If the city has a lot of calls for service, the Sheriff's Department has always been excellent about assisting with any of those calls where they may be able to provide additional police service. They don't necessarily handle the calls for the police department, but they do back us up, and they do assist in searching for individuals. So it is a good partnership, but no, not necessarily by design.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. And Chief, certainly to all of those that are going to be recognized from the city, Belvidere, and from the city council, and myself, we certainly, I think it exemplifies professionalism, and we're grateful. So, thank you. All right, item B, police department holiday time carryover request in your packet from Chief Woody, April 16th, 2024, is a memo. Chief?
Thank you again, Mayor. Officer Jesus Laripara and Officer Ashley Hauser were hired on August 18th, 2023. They attended the 16-week Basic Law Enforcement Academy at Sauk Valley from August 21st to December 8th of 2023. Both officers then, from Basic Academy, began field training, which they'll complete here at the end of April. Due to their required attendance, they have not been able to use their accumulated holiday time. I'm requesting that these hours be carried over in FY '25. I would request a motion to authorize the carryover of unused holiday time in FY '24 to FY '25, as shown below. Officer Ashley Hauser, 108 hours. Officer Jesus Laripara, 92.25 hours.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Flurry, thank you.
Second.
Second by Alderman Stevens, thank you. Any questions, any, for the chief, any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, thank you, Chief Woody. Moving on, item C, fire department update. Chief Shadle, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, thank you. As usual, I'll begin the update with the review of the calls over the past 30 days. We have had 274 calls for service, which equates to about nine per shift. 185 of those were EMS calls, and of those EMS calls, 148 persons were transported by ambulance to the hospital. 67 of those were to OSF, 44 to UW Belvidere, 22 to UW Rockford, and 15 to Javon Bay. So last month, we performed CPR more than usual. We had 14 instances where we provided CPR. Five of those, we were able to obtain ROSC, which is, if you remember, the return of spontaneous circulation. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they're out of the woods, but it means that they didn't have pulses at some point there, and then we were able to get them back. Five of those were infield terminations, and I mention them because when you, when you terminate in field, it's good for the, for the public to know that the ALS engines and the ALS ambulances have absolutely everything that the hospital does for when somebody goes into cardiac arrest. And the ACLS protocols that they follow are the same exact protocols that the emergency doctors actually utilize. So this started a few years back where our protocol said if you're, someone is unresponsive, pulseless, and apneic, no, no pulses or not breathing, that you do CPR for 20 minutes. After 20 minutes, if there's no changes and their heart rhythm is in asystole, which means that there's no rhythm. So in those cases, then the doctor is called, and then they terminate, they do what's called an infield termination. And it, it's difficult to explain to families that, you know, why didn't you take them to the hospital? So that's why I kind of went in depth tonight, just for, if anybody asks you guys, you know, why didn't they take my loved one to the hospital or something like that? And we had, we had five of those, and so we, we do our very, very best to explain exactly just what, what I explained. Now, if someone has a shockable rhythm, or then, so that is when the defibrillation may, may work, we, we transport after. But our protocols require us to start CPR and perform it on scene, because providing the circulation and the airway and everything that we can provide for them is more beneficial to just do it right then and there. And then, once you've done that, and you got, we have them set up on the Lucas device, which does automated compressions and have controlled their airway, then we transport. So I just thought I'd, since we had so many of those this month, I just wanted to explain a little bit of that for the community. Last month, we had six motor vehicle accidents with injuries. We had six times where we found carbon monoxide, so check your carbon monoxide detectors. We had four gas leaks. We had three fires. One, we responded auto aid. One, we received aid. It was a cooking fire. Thankfully, it was extinguished, and then we just cleared the smoke out and a mulch fire. And we responded to two power lines down. Aid given, aid received. We gave an ambulance five times and an engine twice, and we received an ambulance six times and one ladder truck. So any questions on the responses before I move on?
Any questions for Chief Shadle? Anybody? Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So Chief, with the transports, all three hospitals are used. How do you determine which hospital? Is it, like, the patient tells you which hospital? Is it, does it go by their insurance? You know, some are in-network and out-of-network on people's insurance cards, or is it just whatever hospital is closest, or is it just random, you just try to divvy them up?
That is actually a great question. So patients do have the choice. They, they, they direct their care. There are certain instances where, you know, we'll, we'll recommend that, you know, for example, this is something that is likely you're going to be admitted for in town. They, they don't have that capability. So we, what, basically what we try and do is help them make the most informed decision. Ultimately, it's the patient's choice, but we try and help them out as much as, as much as possible. There's certain directed care where, like, you, you can't bring STEMI, or a stroke, or OB, or preferably pediatric to the local hospital, because they're not equipped to, to care for those. But there's actually protocols and directives that say, you know, the closest hospital for a STEMI or the closest, transport the patient to the closest stroke center. So there is the possibility, though, once you explain that to the patient, and they say, hey, I want to go to the hospital in town. It is, it is their right, and we would have them fill out a form that say they're, you know, going against medical advice, basically, or taking responsibility. They'd fill out a patient refusal. So that is a great question. So the most direct answer to summarize is, is the patient's choice with the help of our paramedics in helping them make the most educated decision that they can.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Chief Shadle? All right, thank you, Chief.
Now, Mayor, excuse me, pardon. That was just the calls for the last. I have a couple more updates. I know Attorney Drell is excited about that.
Carry on, Chief. He kicked me.
Thank you, sir. I wanted to thank Midwest Refrigeration and Consolidated Construction. They have been allowing us to train on the acquired structure, and since it hasn't been torn down yet, we've been taking advantage of that as much as possible. And I was very happy to find out today that we, we have trained there for 15 days. And so, since it's kind of out of our district, what we do is we'll send one engine company there, and then we'll keep one in the city. So each of those 15 days, both crews trained about two hours at the house. And so four hours each day, they were out there. And they, they did search and rescue one day. They did firefighter survival and May Day training. One day, they did hose deployment drills, vertical ventilation, which is cutting holes in the roof. And then VEIS, which is vent, vent enter search. And what that is, is say there's a fire and a crew suppressing the fire, well, there is somebody trapped in a different spot, maybe on the second story or something. So we will break the window, go in there. The isolate means shut the door, and then, you know, try and rescue that person there. That is when you have a known victim at a known, known location. So, and then you would perform that. It's kind of a higher-risk maneuver, but it's something that we absolutely practice in, in the right situation, can be absolutely beneficial. So I definitely wanted to thank Midwest Refrigeration and Consolidated Construction, and then also Lieutenant Tangi and Lieutenant Thornton for putting all those classes together. So every single one of those is put on our Google Calendar, and then our, a link to our training software, which has all the objectives of the day. Like, we got to meet these objectives, so it's structured. And that, that wouldn't be done without the talents of those two. And then the last training update is Captain Swanson and Captain Letourneau got to go to command school. And so what that is, it's a, it's a great opportunity. It's a one-week class, and it's hands-on. And they combine the class with the company officers. So the company officers are practicing at burn towers, live operations, and leading companies. And then the command staff practices in real-time, and with, with live fire and, you know, setup scenarios, they practice commanding those scenarios. So those two classes are, are held simultaneously. They each are learning about their role, and so it's a great opportunity. I do believe that all of our officers now have, have had that opportunity to, to complete that. So I'll transition. I'm almost done. So we did apply for a small equipment grant through the state. We unfortunately heard back recently that we didn't get that. EMS billing, so far, we've submitted 1,865 ambulance trips. Our current revenue is 427,658. I did want to tell you, last month, I updated you on our struggle with our data service for Medicare and Medicaid, and Medicaid was, was much, much worse. October 16th is what they were allowing us to and beyond. So they were initially going to not reimburse for any of those previous trips, and we've received verbal confirmation, and we're resubmitting those all the way till June 10th. So the vast majority of that, and that, they, they estimated the revenue, actual revenue to us, to about 190,000. So that's very, very fortunate, because that will put us in line with what we approximated at the beginning of the year. So hopefully, that does come to fruition. We're still working with Medicare to see if they can just adjust that, their date one more month back. If they do that, Medicaid will also do that for us. So it's fairly unlikely, but we're, we're trying, trying our best. We got one, one last letter to send. So, and then firefighter candidate applications are going to be, we're going to start accepting them on May 1st. And that is all I have for an update. I'll be happy to answer any questions on that.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Shadle? Okay. Thank you, Chief. And item D? Fire department vacation time carryover request, which in your packet is a memo from Chief Shadle dated April 22nd. Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is for two probationary firefighters, and it's a result of how they recruit, accrue time off as they pass holidays, and then they're often unable to utilize those due to the vacation calendar being full. So I am requesting a motion to approve the carryover of two vacation days, each for probationary firefighter Herrera and probationary firefighter Jankowski.
Okay. Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. And item E, fire department, in your packet, from Lexipol Services Proposal, Chief had sent out a, Chief Shadle had sent out a memo of force from April 17th, 2024. In your packet, Chief Shadle?
Thank you, sir. So this item, I'll start off by saying is budgeted for, it was included in our FY '25 budget, and it's included in the, in the line item. As you can guess, in emergency situations, having standard operating guidelines and procedures are a must to make sure that we're operating safely, operating efficiently across all three shifts. Without those standard policies, a simple example would be an engine company thinking that they're going to get their own water supply versus the engine company thinking this, this next due engine is going to grab the water supply. If there's, say, there's a mix-up there, and the first due engine company doesn't get their water supply, because our standard procedure on one shift is that the second due engine is going to provide that for them, well, if now someone's working overtime on a different shift, and on their shift, they don't do it that way, then nobody's gotten the water supply, and that, that has happened. So having those standard procedures that are continually updated, also, it helps with, because the laws and the best practices are, are always change. And so, number one, you want to know what the best practice is and comply with the law. So essentially, one of, like, if there is more help administratively, and I, I don't even know, even if we did, we'd probably propose something like this because of the amount of time that it takes to write and then update these policies on, on an annual basis. It would take significant amount of time and effort, whereas Lexipol, if you flip through the memo, you can see a map where they provide the service in our area to numerous fire departments. So they're, they're not reinventing the wheel. They're able to do it much more efficiently than we can, and they have a whole legal team, and they're able to assist us by making sure our policies are up to date and according to best practices. And then they have an online and according to best practices. And then they have an online platform that tracks that everyone has read that policy and has been trained on it. And it, it provides training briefs and things like that. So, it, it would really be helpful for our department to do that. So, the recurring annual cost this year is $11,458.90. That is the cost for the policies and the platform. There are implementation costs because they have to review our current policies and see where we're at and merge because not every fire department has two ALS engines and two ambulances, right? Every, everyone's response would be a little bit slightly different. So, they actually take some time to merge and customize those. And the one-time implementation fee for that is $7,595.25. So, the total for the estimate there is $19,054.15. I am looking for a motion to authorize agreement with Lexi Poll as outlined in the quote Q76070-2 for $19,054.15 paid out of FY '25 line item 01-05-220-720.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of questions as I was reading through this. Has this been vetted through the union or is there any, do they need to look at any of this?
So, the direct answer would be no. Like, like I would, basically the union would support these because they're based on best practices. There's nothing that is, and it's based on, they're either best practices or based on the NFPA standards, which, which they would, they would want to do. A lot of those are for, for their safety. The union president is firefighter Vaughn and they are basically department-wide, everybody would, is, is, feels like this is a fortunate opportunity for us. There would be no union issues with, with our union saying like, well, we don't want to do this or we don't want to do that. Anything that is a direct change to policies, we have a formal procedure for posting for two weeks and giving them opportunity to provide feedback on, on that. And so, if something was a true change in working conditions, if something like that came up, then I would work with the union to come up with a, a good solution. But over all this, having good policies and procedures has been on our radar for numerous years, even before I had started and everyone that I have spoken with, and I haven't one-on-one spoken with everyone or gotten exact feedback, but are, believe that this is a, a great opportunity. And they're looking forward to have that, having that structure and that uniformity.
Thank you. And then the other question I have is regarding the reports that are going to be automated. Is this something like, it's, it says produce reports showing completion of daily training bulletins and then reduce the time the supervisors spend verifying policy acknowledgement and training completion. Is this something that the shift supervisor, shift supervisors monitor now?
No. The policies, I mean, we, we do have the most important policies. They haven't been, a lot of them updated since they were written probably in 2015 or 2017. But we do, we do train on, on those that we do have. We use our Target Solutions Training Platform to, to track that and they, they could pull a report from that. Unfortunately, with Lexi Poll, the, you get it, it's all or nothing. So, you either get their, their policies and their platform. I had asked how, if there was a way to just get help with the policies and, and track it and if there'd be any reduced costs. And they said, there's, there's no reduced cost. So, the reporting would be very similar to the type, type of reporting that we would be able to utilize with Target Solutions. And then to answer your question about do they look at stuff like that? So, there's certain like OSHA mandated training. For example, respiratory and your SCBA training. And they will pull those records, but all, all mandatory training, we assign to everybody. And so, we know and we track it. And our administrative assistant, Ms. Gilman, helps us track. And then as soon as the roster is completed, we actually have a spot just for annual required training. So, like, if, if OSHA comes, they've, they have come once in my career unannounced. And then also the Illinois State Fire Marshal comes unannounced usually. And so, we have all that right there for them. So, really what we're paying for is the expertise to have the policies written and, and to be up to date.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So, Chief, I have a couple of questions as well. So, the services proposed are designed to meet your agency's specific goals and needs. So, are these tailored for our specific population and, you know, our two fire stations and, and the amount of firefighters we have? Or is it basically ballparking?
No, it is 100% tailored to our city, our, our responses. And so, when they make the guidelines, the, that's basically the implementation fees. So, there's those four tiers that they put their policies in. And there's an implementation fee for each of those. And the two most important are the tier one and the tier two. It would have been more expensive if we had, would have had the tier three and tier four done. But those are like the legal and the most important policies. And they are 100% made to our department. They're made based on our, our, our minimum staffing. They're based on our, our responses. Many of the policies that are, are state statute, those would be, those apply equally to, to everybody. But the response guidelines would be one, even our, something like our uniform policy, right? Everybody's uniform. They have different vendors. They have different requirements. They'll, they will incorporate our current uniform policy into their system. So, it'll be customized for the Belvidere Fire Department.
And then for it to be annual, do SOPs really change that often? I mean, I know it goes by state changes, but it takes a while to get stuff through state legislature for those changes. So, could this be something like more of a three to five-year, let's take another look at? Or does it have to be done annually?
I have asked myself that same as that question. And it's, it's a one-year contract. So, you know, you are 100% right. Certain things are not going to change. And we have some really good policies that were written in 2017 that still apply 100%. And a lot of the changes are, are minor. To receive full ISO credit, the insurance rating credit, they want every single policy that you have to be at least reviewed on an annual basis. So, even if it's not changed, go through, hey, it was policy effective this date, reviewed this date. And they want that reviewed date every year. So, you are 100% correct. If, if ever, I believe that we have a good foundation of, of great policies and we didn't need their services. I, I would absolutely, this is a, a year-by-year situation. And my original plan was to try in my first year, my goal was a very lofty goal. And I didn't get much work on it at all, was to create our policy manual, put them all in one spot and have them with page numbers and have to be able to reference. A lot of our previous, so our previous administration did a lot with directives like, hey, in this situation, I need you to do this. And those were on a clipboard. And, and it was very, very difficult because there was no table of contents. And, and I said, I'm going to, I'm going to fix this. And I haven't been able to fix it all the way. But this should definitely help and at, you know, even as soon as next year. If, if we, we get through this whole first year and it's, if it's something that's not needed or the, the value is less than the cost, I would absolutely not continue to, to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
So, I gathered based on this, you're going to give them a bunch of information, some of your known policies. And then they're going to come up with a, a version of it. And then your guys are going to go through again and tweak that before it becomes policy?
Yep, that's exactly true. So, part of the quote, they asked how many pages of policy do we, we have? And I forget exactly what, what it was, but you're exactly right. That, that will be the process.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. So, the motion on the floor is to authorize the agreement for Lexi Poll Services outlined in quote Q-76070-2 for $19,054.15 paid out of fiscal year line item 01-05-220-7020. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Chief Shadle. Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you. Item three, finance and personnel unfinished business. We have none this evening. Item four, finance and personnel new business, finance department update. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. Three quick updates. Last month, we shared that residents will soon have the option to move to paperless utility billing, view their accounts online, make one-time payments, set up auto pay and even pay from a mobile app. Staff continue to work through the implementation process and the goal is to roll out this new feature with the May billing cycle. Fiscal year end for '24, with only eight days left remaining in the fiscal year, staffs working to complete year-end activities and have already begun providing audit documentation while simultaneously preparing for the new year. Sickich will be on site in May to complete preliminary fieldwork and will return for two weeks in June for the final fieldwork. And finally, grants, departments continue to seek out and apply for grants for a variety of citywide projects as evidenced by the updated active grants list provided for you this evening. We currently have 29 grants in stages ranging from application to near completion.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Hanson regarding that update? Okay. Thank you very much. Item B, American Rescue Plan Act Funds Regarding Engine Rebuild of Fire Engine 102. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you again. In your packets, you have a memo. Today, council has approved ARPA funds to be used for the following eligible projects. And Southwest Tower Rehabilitation, $600,000. Primary Clarifier Upgrades, $700,000. Primary Clarifier Upgrades, $816,000. And the purchase of a 2022 Pure Saber Pumper for $245,465.26 for a total of $2,361,465.26. Recently, Engine 102, a 2017 Lexus, experienced a loss of power and subsequent engine failure as a result of dust in the engine caused by a faulty KNN air filter. An overhaul of the engine is needed at an estimated cost of $35,188.86. To date, the city has not earmarked the remaining ARPA funds. Given the necessity and urgency of the engine repair, coupled with the fact that this one single repair would leave insufficient funds for vehicle annual testing and routine, and routine maintenance for fiscal year '25, I recommend ARPA funds be used to repair Engine 102 and to purchase a three-year, 150,000-mile warranty. Recommended motion is to approve the use of $35,188.86 of ARPA funds in fiscal year '25 for costs associated with the engine rebuild of Fire Engine 102 and $1,800 for a three-year, 150,000-mile warranty.
Okay. Thank you. If I could have a motion to that effect, please? Motion by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Thank you. Second by Alderman Stevens. Thank you. And any questions regarding that motion on the floor? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And item C would be accept grant award from U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Railroad Administration. Ms. Hanson?
Thank you again. The city of Belvidere applied for and has been awarded a grant in the amount of $1,666,279 for design and engineering work necessary for the construction of a grade separation structure over two existing railroad crossings along, along South Appleton Road between U.S. Route 20 and Newburgh Road, Locust and Locust Street. This project provides economic development, traffic safety and environmental benefits for the city of Belvidere. The projected cost of the project is 2.6 million and the city is awaiting a determination on a second grant application submitted for the remainder of the funds. This grant requires a match of $520,000 from the city. However, if the city is awarded the second grant, those funds will be used to cover the match requirement. Funds through this grant were allocated to the city with the assistance of Congressman Bill Foster. Recommended motion is to accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Railroad Administration in the amount of $1,666,279 to be used for design and engineering, engineering work necessary for the construction of a grade separation structure on Appleton Road, South Appleton Road, and to authorize the mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds.
Okay. If I could have a motion to?
I'll make that.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderwoman Gramkowski. Thank you both. Any questions regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Albertini?
Thank you, Mayor. The question I have is, I see we have to have a $520,000 match, but we're hoping to get that in a grant. If we don't get the second grant, the city either has to come up with the $520,000 to match that or we'll lose the original grant being issued to us. Is that correct?
Yes. That's correct. I give you a little bit of, I know I've talked about this before. Originally Congressman Foster was, he had been out here to Belvidere. Of course, this is his district. And he was interested in obviously the Stellantis as well. He's well aware that we have had success with the Walmart distribution, cold storage distribution facility, as well as the other two General Mills and also Midwest Refrigerated Services. He's well aware of that. He's also well aware of, once the lot this gets going again, there will be a freight issue, not only with rail in this community as it has been since 1965, but you're going to have it compounded with some truck traffic that's also going to take place. I had always felt that, that whenever you have a three-mile train and you're stuck for 20 minutes, whether it be a public safety vehicle, whether it be an employee of one of the, of the plant or some other, of the other facilities now that are in place, or whether you're just trying to get home and get across town, you have to go extraordinary distance out of your way. And I've always felt that they probably wish they would have done that. Maybe at some point they thought they were going to do it, but I think it probably got left behind. However, we had had a grant from Congressman Foster, I believe, last year, and it was a million dollars. It fell short. So, this is a million six, seven. But also I have written a letter to Senator Durbin. They have a congressional spending for this year. And I've asked him to contribute $3 million. All we need is 1.3, $4 million to make the remainder of that. And then we would cover the engineering study in its entirety and also, also the shortfall that we would have to come up with. I'm confident that we will get it. I've, I do believe we will get it. I think when we look at the, we're at the growth corridor and some of the investment we have. I have tried to make the case that we are going to have a bottleneck out here that separates this community. And we need to make sure that, we need to make sure that we try and address that. So, also before Alderwoman Freeman, I did want to thank Brent and Shannon both because none of these grants, as I had said before, are easy to fill out. And it takes a huge amount of work. a huge amount of work, both, both of them. This one that we're successful on, and also the Durbin's congressional spending one, and we have other ones that hopefully, we're going to have applied for this project. The good part of it is, is that, I think the upside is that when you're successful with getting the grant engineering, I was told by the congressman that once you have the engineering in its entirety, that it's 100% right now that you will get the, the money for the project, which Brent, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 32.5 million, maybe more. But that's, that was my understanding. So it looks like if we can get this, then we potentially would be able to have a grade separation that should have been there all along. At least, I thought so. So Alderman Freeman?
Thank you. So Appleton there goes down to two lanes at Sixth Street to Locust. So will this cover making that all four lane? Are we still looking at doing that?
Yes. And we had been given an opportunity to have funding to make that a four lane. And I, my thought, my point was, when I had started talking about this project some two, two and a half years ago, was that I want you to save your money. Save your money. All we'll have here is a four-lane bottleneck instead of a, a two-lane. That's all. We'll just have more traffic stacked up on a four lane. And so I thought they would know the sincerity of the ask if I told them to go ahead and keep the remainder of that money and not make it a four lane until you could apply that to a bridge, a grade separation over what is essentially two tracks, a switch, switching, and then the, the tracks that run west. So as well, they're talking about using those same tracks for the passenger rail. How that turns out, we shall see. But, so I think, I think all in all, it's something that with the semi-traffic, I just look at it as if we don't ask now, we will be that much further behind in asking for it later. So hope that, hope that explains it. Alderman Snow?
So again, to Alderman Albertini's question, the $520,000, if we don't get that grant, is this something that we're going to have to raise the tax levy in order to achieve that fundage? Just tossing it out there.
Yeah. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't support that. I don't think we'll have to. I think we're going to have, I think we're going to get the funding because I know that this is a very, very high-traffic, high-volume, high-economic development area where it's located, along the growth corridor. When you have the President of the United States come out here, and he recognizes that you've been able to save an auto manufacturing plant, I think that we will see those funds. I believe it. But we'll cross that bridge when we get there. If not, anybody else? Okay, so we have a motion on the floor then, that being the motion to accept the grant funds, excuse me, funds from the U.S. Department of Transportation, Federal Railroad Administration in the amount of $1,666,279 to be used for design and engineering work necessary for the construction of a grades separation structure on South Appleton Road, and to authorize a mayor and finance director to execute any documentation necessary to facilitate the receipt of grant funds. If there are no other comments or questions, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, thank you. And again, thank you, Ms. Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, moving on, under five other, we have item A, Public Works 2024 MFT Street Maintenance Program for 2024. I know that Mr. Anderson had given us a copy of this a couple of weeks ago. And, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion to approve the overlay list for the 2024 MFT Street Maintenance Program.
Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Fleury. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments, any changes, any concerns? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Item B, Public Works NYMAC Streetlight Bills. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, Your Honor. It's that time again. The NYMAC group is bid for street lighting will be held on Tuesday, May 21st. We have two accounts that accommodate the probably 99% of our street lighting costs. The bids will be received from AEP, Constellation, DynaG, MC Squared Energy, and Direct Energy. Pricing will be provided for one, two, or three-year terms. In order for us to participate, we need to execute the winning suppliers agreement on the day of the bid. I would recommend authorizing the mayor to sign the suppliers agreement for electricity for the above referenced accounts on the day of the bid opening. Then this electricity will be paid for from line item 015-330-6310.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Alderman Stevens, thank you. And a second, please. Second by Alderman McGee, thank you. Any other, any questions, any follow-up? Alderman Freeman?
So the seat...
Is it one or no?
MC Squared for, for the residential.
Okay, so would not going with them on this have any effect on that? Or is this completely separate?
Completely separate. And we'll have another one. We'll be coming back to you for our facilities electrical, which includes all of our lift stations, wastewater treatment plants, wellhouses. That's a separate one that's coming up, I believe, in July sometime. So it'll be another month or two, and we'll be back in front of you for the same request.
So by using one for all of them, residential, this, and the one you just referenced, would that constitute any more of a savings for residents or the city as a whole?
So this is a part of the NYMAC, Northern Illinois. So it's a large group of entities that all subscribe to this service, if you will, as a, as a co-op. So in that respect, to bundle it up, we bundle up with, based on your electrical usage and aggregation. And so, no, it wouldn't necessarily apply to that. They may look at it that way, but it's set up as three different accounts the way through NYMAC. So that tends to give us our best, best price that we can get.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding the motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And if there's any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. And item C, Public Works ComEd Indoor Lighting Incentives. Mr. Anderson?
Get memo in your packet. ComEd, ComEd is still offering incentives for upgrading our indoor lighting to LED. Our building, water, the former Public Works office, 210 Whitney, current Water Department office building qualifies. We've received a reservation from ComEd for funding. Total cost of the upgrade is $9,080, qualified incentive of $4,153.80. Leaves the net cost to city of $4,926.20. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Helma Electric for the LED lighting upgrade at the Water Department office, subject to receiving the ComEd incentive for indoor lighting for a net cost to the city of $4,926.20. And that cost will be split between the Water Department line item 615-810-6010, and sewer line item 615-836,000.
Okay. Thank you. Could I have a motion that effect, please? Motion by Alderman Stevens, second by Alderman Albertini. Thank you both. Any questions, any comments regarding the motion on the floor? Alderman Gramkowski?
Okay, so this doesn't apply to indoor lighting, but is there anything ComEd can do for Farmington to, we've talked about that before. Can we look at that, please?
The only thing I can do is to encourage our, our representative and perhaps American help in that department. I, we've been advised that it is on their program to change those lights out to LED, and it hasn't done yet. Yet I'll have to get an update from them as to what they're, where they're at in the progress as to if we're just changing those lights out.
I'd be curious to know the timeframe.
And I, just as a, as a follow-up with that, I did have a conversation with ComEd regarding Farmington and the lights. And I didn't get the answer that I was hoping for, but that doesn't mean I'll quit asking. So I think what's happened is, for the upgrades, they have tremendous amount of upgrades they have to do. And I don't believe that, you know, these are going to be, they're in a certain order. It, it appears they're in a certain order. But I will talk to them again. How's that? Good? All right, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion, so we have a motion on the floor then. No other questions or comments? Excuse me, I lost my place here. All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson. All right, that is all we have this evening. Could I have a motion adjourned, please? Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman Frank. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody want to stay? All right, for the record, we adjourned at 7:00 PM. Thank you, everybody, for your time.